Good afternoon, we're gonna call to order. The Abilene City Commission regular meeting agenda for October twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five. Shayla, maybe have roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
President.
Commissioner Kohlhoff.
President.
Commissioner Reisenberg.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan is absent, roll call complete.
Thank you, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And we'll move on to item number four, which is approval of the agenda for today's October twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five city commission meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Perfect, so. We'll go into roll call. Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff.
Aye.
Mayor Ryan is absent, and I'm yes. And number five, we'll go into the consent agenda for the October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five meeting.
And I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
I'll second.
All right, so we'll go into roll call. Commissioner Koloff.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Myself, yes. All right, then we'll go into public comments. Just a reminder, there'll be a three minute limit if you wish to speak.
Hello, everybody, I'm Natalie, I'm the new. I wanna say CEO of the Economic Development Corporation. Just wanted to introduce myself and let you know that I'm working on educating myself and identifying all the programs and incentives that are available to newer existing businesses. I'm also working on kind of reactivating the partnership, the chamber arm that once operated to help and to to help all of our existing businesses as well as. Kind of organizing the office and figuring out what else I need to do. So do any of you have any questions for me?
No, you don't.
Okay, I'm glad to be here.
Thank you, welcome Natalie.
Good afternoon, Julie Roller Week's Tourism Director. When I pitched Abilene as a possible host location for Fox and Friends back in August, I had no idea how the opportunity would quickly turn into reality and how excited the community would be to take part in this event. Our initial broadcast was scheduled for September, then postponed and finally rescheduled for October, just ten days before the live broadcast. Abilene went from a suggestion on paper to national spotlight and one of America's most watched morning shows. I haven't seen our community come together so strong since COVID, and I couldn't be prouder. On Saturday morning, Steve Ducey called to personally thank Abilene for the warm welcome and excellent show, sharing that it was one of their best yet. Despite the early hour and a little bit of rain, Abilene showed up in a big way. The best part is that this is already paying off. Downtown businesses have seen new sales. Manufacturers are receiving inquiries and travelers are requesting visitor guides. Steve even shared that a friend called him after the show and said after seeing Abilene on TV, that's exactly the type of town I would like to live in. And here's something important to note, we didn't pay for the airtime. This was entirely earned media, something that we excel at. The filming wasn't about politics or any one show or station. It was about celebrating our community and celebrating what makes Abilene special. Since the show aired, our Facebook content has been shared or viewed nearly seven hundred and seventy thousand times. Can you believe that? It's an incredible visibility for a small town. After the broadcast, CVBs from across Kansas reached out congratulating us. Senator Jerry Moran even shared a post congratulating Abilene for the great success. When you think about economic development, it's worth noting that Kubota is a major advertiser on this station. We heard from when they heard about the opportunity to showcase their products right here in Abilene, they immediately jumped at the opportunity. The same goes for Rawhide Portable Corral, Thunderstruck Bumpers, and others who took part in the filming. We created the opportunity at our local businesses and community rallied around it. We cannot forget the Abilene High School marching band. More than fifty students volunteered on their day off from school to come downtown at five thirty in the morning in the rain to be part of the celebration. Wow, just wow. Thank you to the City of Abilene departments, businesses, and community members who worked together and came down to town early in the rain to make it happen. Your willingness to say yes and go the extra mile, stay flexible despite countless changes is commendable. Ike said it best, plans are worthless, but planning is everything. Abilene shined on Friday, and together we reminded the nation of why we are truly one of America's best small towns. If we can pull this off with just ten days' notice, imagine what else we can do when we work together. I have a signed sign from Steve Ducey thanking Abilene. So I will present this over here, but thank you all so much.
Thank you, Julie, for a job well done. Seeing no more comments, we'll move on to the next section, six eight Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Carly Tinkler, D-VAC.
Hello, so D-VAC serves all survivors and victims of domestic and sexual violence, human trafficking, elder abuse, teen dating violence, and stalking. Really, the really awful things that tend to happen in people's lives sometimes. So we'll go ahead and get started with the proclamation. Whereas domestic violence is a widespread, preventable, public health problem impacting all demographics of Kansans, including the City of Abilene. And whereas relationships are often counted as life's greatest treasures, and tragically, many are tarnished by one's feeling of entitlement to power and control over the other. Resulting in violence and fear. And whereas domestic violence abusers violate an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity with their intentional systematic use of financial, psychological, sexual, and physical coercive control and abuse. Whereas the US Department of Justice reports domestic violence homicides comprise fourteen percent of all homicides in the United States, and that women are more than twice as likely as men to be killed by an intimate partner. The Kansas Bureau of Investigation reports thirty-two domestic violence homicides where twenty-one and a half. Well, that was twenty-one and a half of all homicides in two thousand and twenty-three, which is our last statistics. Whereas in Kansas in two thousand and twenty-three, a domestic violence abuser murdered another person every eleven days, nine hours, forty-five minutes, and forty-three seconds. A domestic violence abuser committed a violent act reported to law enforcement every twenty-three minutes, zero seconds, and law enforcement made an arrest due to domestic violence every forty-six minutes, zero seconds. And whereas, we're asking the governing body of Abilene to recognize this violence is inconsistent with the city's values and cannot be ignored, excused, or tolerated. And declaring the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we encourage all citizens to know the facts about domestic violence, to familiarize themselves with resources, to recognize subtle signs of control tactics, to act as a safe support system. To speak up against perpetrators of violence in any messages that inadvertently condone domestic violence, to get involved, to teach others, and prepare future generations for healthy relationships. And to donate time and or resources to their local domestic violence agency. And so we ask that you would honor us with the October being Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Yes, thank you for all that you do for for everybody, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we have this if you wanna come on up and. All right, we'll move on to six C, which is the biweekly well-filled health and production report.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Brad Anderson, I'm the Public Works Director. Just a brief update on the wells. As of right now, they are sustaining, they are not getting any worse, but they are not reaching the levels of restoring to full capacity either. So that's generally the same update that we kind of give. I do feel that it's gonna take a major rainfall to change that and. On a good yet bad thing, we kind of hope we have a winner that will help maintain some of that. I apologize for not having any of the direct numbers directly in front of me, but I can tell you that the numbers in one of your upcoming reports may be construed a little bit, and the reason that is is because well fourteen, we recently had a submersible pump and for that whole well fail on us. We had to get that repaired, so the pumping figures are gonna look just a little bit different while we had to do some adjustments while that well was down. We do have that repaired back in service, but I've just given you a little bit of an update on the number situation for that. And the Fourth Street Water Tower is back in service, the polymer is dried, we've tested it for. Everything that needs to be done to make sure we're complacent with KDHE, and so that tower is back active again. So that's good news for us. Do you have any questions other than that?
Do you have the documents that were provided earlier? I didn't see anything in our packet. It's kind of showing the levels, the actual number on that.
It's attached in the reports at the very end, Mr. Quinde.
I don't believe so. Mike Blackettier and Brad provided me that information last week. I did not get it into the packet, so I will send that this evening to the commission and then ask Kelly to post it on the city website.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll move into the number seven, business items. Seven A is consider approval of an agreement with the Rattellis, I'm sorry if I said that wrong, financial consultants for a water utility cost of service and rate design study for the City of Abilene for an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars interim city manager Quinde.
Correct, two weeks ago, we discussed with the city commission, we received two proposals for a cost of service study and a rate structure. Rattellis was thirty thousand dollars, could meet the deadline or the timeline that we requested, which would be to have that information to the city by December fifteenth. So many recommendations could be considered by the city commission who implemented at the beginning of two thousand and twenty-six. The other proposal was from eighteen ninety-eight, which is a subsidiary of Burns and McDonald, and their cost was forty-two thousand nine hundred dollars. We discussed the difference between the cost of service study as post revenue requirements study. So in your packet is a professional services agreement between the city and Rattellis to conduct that work, they will do a water utility cost of service and a rate design study. They will. The schedule that we've asked them for is to, if approved by the commission today, we'll have a kickoff meeting within the next week and then. In November first and December fifteenth, work with them, and they will design the cost of service study and the rate structure. And then we should have a draft report by December first, and then December fifteenth have a final report. The benefit for this company is the model that they create to or that they use to do that will become ours. So in the future, if we need to make adjustments, we can input that information without having to hire somebody to do that. But we're asking for the city commission to approve the professional services agreement with between the city and Rattellis Financial Consultants and authorize the mayor to sign it.
Thank you, so I'll consider a motion.
And I'll make a motion to approve this agreement with Rattellis Financial Consultants for water utility cost of service and rate design study for the City of Abilene for an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
I'll second. So I have a motion and a second, we'll go into roll call. Commissioner Witt.
Actually, for any, I might want to ask if there's any discussions.
Sorry, my first time doing this, are there any discussions that anybody has?
No.
No?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll go into roll call, Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff.
Aye.
And Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Perfect, and then we'll move on to.
Get yourself.
Oh, and myself, yes.
I'll be here to help you out.
And then we'll move on to business item seven B, consider approval of the mayor to sign the payment request form, acceptance certificate, and the title and registration and security interest certificate with Community First National Bank. For the final payment of the Rosenbauer SD for the pumper truck, Finance Director Brand.
Hi, Vice Mayor and Commissioners, Fire Chief Strunk will be able to pick up the pumper truck early November, so this just finalizes the release of that final payment through our leasing company and allows the mayor to sign that with your approval.
Thank you, I'll consider a motion.
So moved.
Just to clarify too, I did reach out to the bank about the incorrect notice on the VIN number, and we will have updated documents for the mayor to sign when he's back, so there was a mistake on the VIN number.
Thank you for that clarification, so I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? About this? No, I'll consider a. Oh, no, then I'll go into roll call then. Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
And Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. And then we'll move on to item for discussion number eight. A, approval of the addendum to the Sangoma Communication Services Subscription Agreement, interim city manager Quinde.
Yes, that used to be Star to Star Communications, but they merged with Sangoma, so they they took over and everything will be referred to them. Over the last few months, city staff has been working with Sangoma to look at our phone services and what we need compared to what we're being billed for. We were able to remove some of the services that we're being billed for that we no longer needed. And we also worked negotiating the cost down from what we were paying. It rose from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five sixty-three percent, and we're paying three thousand, more than three thousand dollars a month for all the phone service for city departments. After working with them, we've got that down to one thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars annual cost, which oddly is a sixty-three percent discount. But that does include us purchasing the equipment for four thousand dollars, which the return on investment with that would be four months. The term of the agreement is for two years in your packet, and what I provided to the mission on your desk, there is the original agreement as negotiated with Sangoma. And then looking at that, the city attorney and I had some issues with some of the terms in the agreement. Though at the back of that packet is an addendum that the city attorney and Sangoma worked on. To make sure that everything that we didn't like was addressed and we addressed everything we asked for. The reason that we're on a discussion item for tonight is the. I know the commission likes to talk about things before and then vote on them, which is fine if you want to wait two weeks, if you're comfortable with it, the change takes effect from the date of the signing of the agreement, which would save us two weeks with the. I don't know if Aaron has anything to add or.
No, I do not, I think you've accurately summarized it. The addendum, Sangoma's preferred method of incorporating our proposed changes was to do it via an addendum, which is why you have before you the proposed agreement and then an addendum. So one option would have been to just revise their agreement, but they wanted to do that via an addendum, so there's two separate agreements, but just as background, that's why you see that.
When was the original contract written?
I've written February of twenty twenty. That was a star to star.
And what was the term on that?
Wow, I couldn't, off the top of my head, I think it was more than five years or. It had been renewed automatically.
Okay. Is there a reason that it's a twenty-four month contract?
Yes, that's the shortest that they would offer.
I don't know if anybody else remembers that. Coming up. I think there's, I think we'd be well served to put it out for bid, I think there's much more cost effective options in the market. Obviously, this is a huge, huge savings over what they have been charging us. But it's still kind of a departure from our purchasing policy.
Now, this is amending the existing. Agreement.
Right, that's why I was asking what the original term of that was, I mean, if it's an evergreen, you know, renew every year after the first two years or whatever.
Top of my head, I think it was twenty-six or twenty-seven, it expired. That's all it shows to renegotiate with them rather than terminate and go out for bids.
I'm trying to pull up that original contract if I can find it here, I'm. If anybody else has anything they want to discuss, you're welcome to. Go ahead. Start to start. The only record that I show is continuous, it doesn't show a term.
While I don't have that in front of me, if there would have been an opportunity to terminate the agreement and rebid, we would have similar to what we did with the cleaning contract.
Kelsey, are you tracking contracts through our enterprise system now?
Through our new software system, it does not have a a good way of doing contracts through there. It's a it's an additional module that we would have to purchase that they're still implementing, but I do know that Shayla keeps track of our contracts digitally at the office.
One of the projects that we've been working on, Shayla's doing that, is taking all of our contracts by. The date that they expire, so we regularly review them and ahead of time, we can look and make sure that. We're either not renewing them or trying to take advantage of the renewal period to get better terms. But it's not electronic.
Does, are there any? And Aaron, I'm assuming you reviewed this, the usage charges, I mean, are there any differences in minutes or anything like that, or just per minute or?
There, there may be, I I did not look at those business terms, I focused strictly on the terms and conditions of their agreement, and it was definitely involved in negotiating those, I relied on. Mr. Quinde and staff on the on the business terms. So I'm not prepared to speak to those.
I just didn't see anything, and I'm.
The business terms as in the proposal meet the needs of the department's operationally.
The the contract mentions usage charges, but I don't see where that's. Where there's a cost for that anywhere in the proposal.
All of the costs are detailed on the purchase quote detail there.
Can you point me to the usage charges? But it's number eight in the amendment. But I don't see anything in the proposal that says what the usage charges are.
So the recurring items would be for the Sangoma Business Voice and Curdy Extensions, twenty-four of those at five ninety-nine. The Business Voice and Standard Use Bundle, thirty-seven at twenty-one ninety-nine. Then we have the Star System, that's like the the brains, the published phone numbers, the maintenance, there is no. Per minutes charged for landline.
I'm just, the reason I'm asking is because there's a usage charge in that amendment. Number, under number eight.
This is all in what you sent to me Friday, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes, so that's what I'm saying, we get it Friday, so we can email any questions. And then we, everyone's prepared with the answers.
Do you have the answer?
I don't have any questions. If I do, I email them.
I guess in summary, we have this agreement with Sangoma that we couldn't get out of, we would just go out for bid, but we negotiated with them, saved nineteen hundred dollars per month. Our usage and the equipment that we have is the same, we reduce some items that were no longer used, and rather than pay them to rent the equipment, we're purchasing it.
And Commissioner Kohloff, I just turned to paragraph eight of the agreement, and as you noted, it states that usage charges will continue to be invoiced monthly in arrears. And as Mr. Quinde noted. In the quote itself, there are various charges, I don't see a usage charge. I would note that this is somewhat of a master subscription agreement that incorporates the quote by reference there in paragraph two. And I fully expect that Sangoma provides a host of other services that may carry a usage charge. But the fact that one is not shown in the quote would give me comfort that. This agreement is built for a host of services that they might provide, and if it's not shown in the quote, then we're not agreeing to pay it.
And the quote does also have that same language that usage is billed one month in arrears. That would, for me, I'm not an attorney, but that would be the monthly recurring charges.
Do you have, do you happen to have a previous bill that would indicate that there were no usage charges? Does that make sense?
I'm not sure what you mean by usage. We pay per phone line. We pay for the voicemail. We pay for the equipment.
Rest of the commissioners have any questions?
No.
I'm comfortable with moving forward with this, so I'll make a motion to approve an addendum with Sangoma Communication Services Subscription Agreement.
I'll second. So do we have any other, any other discussion? The only thing I noticed was on the purchase quote summary, that it looks like the quote was only valid through October nineteenth. So is that going to be an issue at all?
We have one that's dated for today.
Ah, perfect. So I have a motion and a second, so no discussion. So I'll go into roll call. Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Nay.
Myself, yes. The motion carries.
Thank you. That'll save the city forty-six thousand dollars over the next two years.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. And then we'll move on to item number eight B. Acceptance of a grant from the Community Foundation of Dickinson County for restroom remodel at Eisenhower and Bicentennial Parks in turn, City Manager Quinde and Community Foundation Director Elizabeth Weiss.
Yes, Elizabeth is here this evening to award the city a fifty thousand dollar grant through the Community Foundation of Dickinson County to update the public restrooms at the Eisenhower and Bicentennial Parks. If the city were to accept the fifty thousand dollar grant, she has a big check also. I don't think it'll cash, but the idea for the, for both of those is to, if you can see in your packet for Eisenhower Park is a new exterior soffit boards, trim and paint the areas that's rotting, interior paint, new entrance doors, floor coating, partitions with doors, urinal partitions, stainless steel sinks, new counters, and a baby changing system in the men's and women's, new toilets, urinals, lights, and ADA compliance in each restroom. At Bicentennial Park, renovations include replacing the block windows that are broken, new exterior soffit, trimming painting that is rotting, interior paint, floor coating, partitions with doors, lighting, and ADA compliant each stall. The total cost is sixty-seven thousand six fifty-five and fifty-nine cents. The Community Foundation would pay for those costs directly to the vendor that they've been working with, along with Kelly. And then to do the full renovations, would, the city would contribute seventeen thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents. That would do the total renovations as presented. So I've got Elizabeth, if she wants to discuss the grant, and then what we'll ask the mission do is to accept the grant and then authorize the work at those parks. That's right. Thank you, Derek.
So again, Elizabeth Weiss with the Community Foundation of Dickinson County. We continue to take a proactive approach in responding to community needs across our county. Recent grants have supported essential facility upgrades, including restroom renovations in Harrington, Solomon, and now Abilene with your approval. The foundation is proud to assist with the renovations of the Eisenhower Park restroom and the partial renovation of Bicentennial Park restroom. While not glamorous, these projects address real community needs and improve the quality of life for residents and visitors alike, demonstrating that the foundation's ongoing commitment to strengthening every corner of Dickinson County. The Community Foundation is pleased to present the city of Abilene with fifty thousand dollars for bathroom projects. We will, however, be putting signs up. We're going to have some humorous signs up there. You know, again, we, we, we looked at these projects. We, we had a board meeting and we were talking about being proactive across Dickinson County. And going to some of the parks and looking at the restrooms, going, not only are citizens, but our visitors wouldn't want to use our restrooms. So we are, I am very pleased that my Board of Directors said, yes, this is important for Dickinson County, and I would hope that you would accept our fifty thousand dollars and that we could get a, a picture with everybody and a great big check that you probably could take to the bank, and they probably would pass. So, thank you. Do you have any questions?
He wants to Amy. I think it's the men's. It's right on video, right? This is John Quinde who brought this up, not-
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I have a question, I guess, for City Manager Quinde. What's the procurement process for that work?
They have met with the contractors.
How does that work, City Attorney Martin, for third parties doing work on city property?
It can be done. There are legal considerations with it. But there's no legal prohibition on that occurring. If I understood correctly, the total project cost is fifty-seven thousand dollars, so it would not implicate a statutory payment bond requirement, the threshold of which is one hundred thousand dollars. If the city were procuring it directly, we might have some basic requirements about insurance. But when you delegate that role, the contracting role to a third party, it's within your discretion as to whether to impose any specific requirements.
Yes, I want to make sure I understood. My understanding is that the city's portion is seventeen thousand, so a total of sixty-seven. Is there any, I guess, any considerations where the city is paying for some portion of it?
If I misspoke and said fifty-seven, I apologize, but no, that, that number doesn't change anything. You know, I've, I've seen cities outsource an entire project, and, and this one, we're doing it mostly in terms of funding it. I don't think that changes the analysis. It would be legally appropriate for you to allow that to occur, to occur. If you wish to do so, you could establish whatever terms and conditions for them to procure and perform that work on city property or the acceptance of it when it's done. Because ultimately, the city will be responsible for maintaining it, and at a minimum, you know, if there are any warranties or anything like that associated with the work, the assignment of those by the Community Foundation to the city, so that the city is in the driver's seat of enforcing those if anything comes up when the project is done. This is, I haven't spoken with anybody about any of that, and if there's a desire to look into that, I'd be happy to do so. But those are kind of the general considerations.
To add on to what the city attorney says, over the years, I've worked with foundations or granting agencies that will do projects on city property. For example, a splash pad in a playground that was several hundred thousand dollars. They pay for it. I think the city contributed twenty thousand dollars for a drinking fountain. They managed it at the end of the term. When the project was complete, the city walked through with the granting agency, such as the foundation, and then accepted that. If there are any warranties, which this kind of work, I'm not sure what there would be other than the toilets or the stainless steel sinks, that those would be assigned to the city. And we would accept the improvements as they are. This is, I'm not sure about Abilene, but this is common in other places, even for projects that exceed a million dollars, with the exception that projects over a hundred thousand dollars do require a bond by state statute, but that's still worked out between the parties.
Is there a reason this isn't going to bid, like per purchasing policy?
Because Dickinson County Community Foundation is paying for it.
Well, you're asking us to pay for part of it, though, correct?
Correct, but that, yes, which I'm asking you to accept the grant for fifty thousand dollars and authorize the work. Seventeen thousand dollars is within my spending authority. I'm not asking permission to spend the seventeen thousand. I'm asking permission to accept fifty thousand dollars so we can leverage or get sixty-seven thousand dollars of work done to the public bathroom, which we're in dire need of it without the city having to pay for it themselves, because frankly, we don't have sixty-seven thousand dollars in the special parks, but we can cover the seventeen.
Where's that coming from?
Special parks.
Special parks. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the grant from the Community Foundation of Dickinson County for restroom remodel at Eisenhower and Bicentennial Parks and authorize the work.
I'll second. So we have motion and second. Any further discussions? I know myself as a parent and now a brand-new grandma, it's very much appreciated that we have some good facilities, and hopefully, parents will encourage their teenagers to respect the, the facilities that we've spent so much time and effort in getting up to speed. So with that, I'll go into roll call. Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The motion carries. Oh, yes. And if you want to come up, we can get a picture?
Come on, board member. Anybody who has ever used a bathroom, get a park. Or maybe wants to use the bathroom in a park in the picture. We're going to have a nice park. That's for you. It's not as easy as you make it seem to be.
To be modesty.
I'll be great. I'm down. All right. Alan, you have to make sure the check's straight. That's kind of-
One, you're a little screwed up. At least I gave you a reading.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so then we'll move on to item number nine, department reports. Do we have any, any new information to present?
I'll just leave this here, if that's all right. Hey, just a quick update for you. I thought it was important that you know that we just recently, in Public Works, completed our biannual bridge inspections, which are required by KDOT as part of their program. They were completed on September ninth, and those are the three bridges that fall underneath the city of Abilene jurisdiction on First Street, Third Street, and Eighth Street. So each of these three bridges inspected were last inspected, obviously, in twenty twenty-three. The most important factors, they were noted for moderate wear and map cracking on the surface, which is probably no surprise. Engineering recommendations, which was done by BG Consultants, the inspections were, are for polymer overlays that provide twenty to twenty-five years of life at a cost of approximately a hundred thousand dollars for each polymer overlay. If you have to add concrete depth patching in place of that, if you have deterioration that is on, below the actual surface, then additional price increases obviously take place from there. Just for your information, a total bridge replacement of the types of bridges that we have are estimated at three point five million dollars apiece. So I think we need to do our best to take care of what we have. Additionally, that Fourteenth Street Bridge, it was significantly a box, a five hundred series box covert, was removed on the Fourteenth Street project, so that was actually removed from our actual bridge inspection list under the KDOT regulations. And if you remember, that was the old underpass. Basically a box covert, but they considered it a bridge with a series number. So that, I just wanted to know that that's all been logged into the portal, and they'll be due once again in twenty twenty-seven now. But I think the Public Works will need to come up with a plan to see what we can do to spend the money, since it's been four years that it's now been recommended that we do the polymer overlay. And every time that we just extend a year, we're living on borrowed time for things that could go more deeply in the wrong if we don't take care of that. And the companies have a lot of experience. The engineering firm that we used on this had a lot of experience with working with some polymer overlays. I, I've worked with several of them in my KDOT past also. And lastly, just real quick, Public Works held our annual snow and ice training today. Just to let you know, I don't want to have to deal with that, but we'd like to have our crews ready. We basically instruct them, once again, as a refresher on operations in our dump trucks, our skid loaders, rerunning our routes, using brine, and just everything that goes into what we have to handle when the time comes, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And seeing none, we'll move into number ten, which is the German of the regular meeting.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn, also noting there's no study session.
Okay, I'll second.
Well, we have a motion and a second. We'll go into roll call. Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The motion carries. We are etern-